But they, you know, it's a change.
Good morning. Thank you all for joining us for our workshop of March 14th, 2017. Swann County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. If you don't mind if you join me in invocation and pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come together as a community to do the business of the county. We ask that you watch over our first responders, our military, and anybody that puts themselves in harm's way for someone else. To God, we ask that you just watch over us today, be with us, guide us, direct us. In Christ's name, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on the agenda is the main reason I called for a workshop. For a while now, we've been discussing the possible changes for solid waste collection sites and the way we were going to be handling materials. So, wanted to get the board together. That's the only time we can really come and discuss something without making a rash decision. So, first thing on the agenda is to discuss solid waste collection sites, services, and handling of material. I guess, Mr. Harris, I'll let you give the board kind of an overview of what we're doing or where we're wanting to go.
I'll give you quite an exhaustive overview. We put a lot of information together for you, and I'll try to cover it as quickly as I can. Let me first of all say that the county attorney is on his way here. He had therapy. Some of you know he had his knee worked on recently, so he'll be here in gym shorts or something, whatever he uses, wears when he's in therapy. But he said he'd be here a little bit late. Commissioners, if you've ever taken a, tried to take a close look at the solid waste budgets, and I say budgets plural, they can be very complicated. So, I tried to give you a thumbnail sketch on page one of the multiple budgets that we have. Got a landfill closure budget, contamination evaluation. One of the big things I'll point out, and you'll find this on your balance sheet, is the escrow account that we have for the landfill. There was a DEP requirement that we escrow for post-closure expenses. It's a big number. It's in a CD. There's a significant portion of that that's in a CD. I'll just go ahead and, the short story is, a lot of those funds have been freed up because we're beyond the time limit that some of those funds are required to be kept in escrow. Some of those funds are currently available for other purposes. One thing that we're going to cover in a little while is the potential of using those for some improvement for the collection sites, buying some equipment, et cetera. And that's something that we've discussed with our CPA. You have a disposal budget. For those that may not know, and I'm not talking about commissioners, but anyone that's in attendance today that may not know, we dispose of our waste at a regional landfill in Georgia. We have a contract with Waste Management. I think it's a five-year contract. So, we cover that expense in the disposal budget, which is the revenues of which are transferred into the transfer station line for expenditure on those disposal costs. You've got a collection budget. That budget covers mostly your collection sites and the services to get garbage from your collection sites back to the landfill. You've got some tire shredding revenues, then your sources of revenue at the bottom. You've got a household, annual household assessment. You've got some commercial accounts where we lease cans and pick those up and dispose the waste. Then we have some over-the-scale customers. That includes municipalities. We had Lafayette County coming to us at one time. We've got other commercial haulers, I think Waste Pro. But in any event, they bring garbage to us. We weigh it when it goes over the scales and they pay. And then we have another smaller source of revenue. We've got a DEP grant that we obtain annually. It's a little over $90,000 per year right now. Next page, page two. And Commissioners, let me just make a general statement. If I can get your attention, please. I know you're going through the comic book, trying to find all the answers before we get to the question. So, let me just say this. If we do not change what we are doing today, we will begin going in the hole. Okay? We have a lot of money. These numbers look great when they're in contingency and in reserves and in escrow accounts. But when your expenses, when your annual expenses are right there at your revenues, and when you have to buy heavy equipment, you have to take it out of your reserves, you know that you're going in the hole. And that's what is currently occurring. And I don't know how many years it's been since, I didn't go back and look, I guess I could have, to see when the household assessment was taken to $130. And I am not even suggesting that we should increase the assessment. Okay? So, that isn't the purpose of this conversation. I want to look at the way that we're doing business and then discuss how we can continue to manage the service, provide the service to the public at the best expense or cost possible without increasing that assessment. Like I said, we do have some revenues coming in from commercial accounts. And at some point, and I'm not prepared necessarily to do it today, I want to look closely at these commercial accounts and see if that's a business that we need to continue to be in. Because I think when you look at the total costs of that, that's worthy of another conversation that I don't want to get into today. But in any event, let's look quickly at the way we do business. We've got 14 collection sites. And I'm at the top of page two. Twelve of those sites have the open gates, 24/7 open gates. Anyone can walk in, anyone can walk out. Very often, they walk out with more than they went in with. And we know that because we go to our metal bins and they're empty in most cases. The drive-through gate is open on average. Drive-through gate is open on average 28 hours per week with an attendant at 11 sites. We have three sites today that have extended hours. Three sites with extended hours. I'm just going to go ahead and say that I think that one of the problems that we suffer today at the sites that do not have the extended hours is that the hours, because we've tried to save money over time, keep our costs down, our hours are a mess. The hours in those, the majority of our sites, let me just give you the scenario. When they open in the morning, on Monday morning, they're open from 7 until 11, and then they're closed until 3. So, they're open from 3 to 6. I've seen customers drive up in the middle of the day thinking they can drop their garbage because they know the site's supposed to be open on that day, but they can't because it's closed in the middle of the day for several hours. And we do that on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Saturday, we're open from 9 to 4 and then close Sunday. But in any event, our hours are a mess, and we need to address that as we go through this. Top of the page two, you've got the types of waste that we take. I'm not going to read through all of those. There are some wastes that we do not take or we list as unacceptable. But in fact, we find a lot of this waste that we are not telling the public that we're going to accept or in fact, we're telling them that we're not going to take. We find it in our sites on a regular basis, almost every day, because we leave the door open. They know when our tenants are gone, and they haul everything in that they're not supposed to, and they leave it there when our tenants are away from those sites. Happens with great regularity. So, subsection B, difficulties with the open gate policy. Number one, Florida statutes, quote, violations remove any item from this compound. We've estimated that the scrap metal that we're losing in these sites is about $100,000 worth a year. And that's just simply taken, I mean, you've got a page in here in your backup that shows what occurred at the, in fact, let's just jump to that real quick. Look back here. It's on page eight. If you go to page eight. This is the Pepper site. And let me just say that, first of all, the cost per pound of scrap metal has dropped internationally. Okay? The cost per pound that's being paid has dropped because it's an international market. It's a commodity, and it has dropped dramatically in the last few years. But look at the tonnage. If you just look at the tonnage in here, top of the page, you've got 2013 and 2014, the first quarters. Just look at your total tons. We started out at 72 tons in 2013. 2014, you had 100 tons. 2015, you had 154 tons. But look at 2016. This is after we put the gates up and closed the door when we're not away. 330 tons of scrap metal because we closed the gates.
Sad thing is, prices have dropped so much. That equaled 100 tons three years ago.
Yeah, that's right. But if you think about this for a minute, we're looking at one site, and in the county, we have 14 sites. So, when I say we're losing close to $100,000 a year in revenue, that's the revenue that it takes us to keep that household assessment where it is. And it's, we're allowing it to just walk out the door. If you go back to page two, top of the page again, we're losing the revenue on the scrap metal, but dumpster divers regularly empty the dumpsters in search of drugs and salvageable items. Some of you have called me. I've called myself. The Sheriff's Department. I've seen it happen on, you know, any number of occasions. I have seen people in the dumpsters with every single bag of garbage thrown out onto the pavement, spread out all over our collection sites with bags ripped open, with people looking for items to sell at a yard sale or a garage sale or a flea market or looking for drugs. And then they get back in their vehicle and drive off. This happens with great regularity at our sites because we leave the gate open. We invite that type of activity. And let me tell you something. We've put so many signs up on these sites, and signs won't cure the problem. In fact, we put signs up, and if they're made out of metal, they get stolen. So, signs don't cure anything. Subsection B, Florida statute to illegally dump litter in areas other than designated collection bins. Again, you've all seen it. People walk in, throw the garbage everywhere from the street up to the front gate, inside the gate, on the ground, everywhere. Very often, you'll have the first three bins filled, and you've got another 20 bins sitting there empty because people won't walk 20 feet, 25 feet to get to those other bins that are available and empty. They'll just throw the trash on the ground. We figure that that costs us between $12,000 and $18,000 a year to clean up behind adults. That's wasted revenue, and again, that's a piece of the puzzle. What's it take to keep the household assessment from going up? Subsection C, we routinely take in unauthorized materials that have been thrown in there. Again, when the site attendant is gone, and everyone knows when they're leaving, they know that we're going to leave the gates open. They march right in, and they leave oils, acids, batteries, pool chemicals, all types of things. But what's worse is they often throw them in those bins, and with great regularity, we're in there. Any of you that have been by the shop know that we're always cutting the bottoms off of these dumpsters and trying to replace them because it eats the steel right out of the bottom of those things very rapidly. When our tenants come back, they have to try to locate, pull as much of that material out of those bins as they can, everything that's visible, so it can be properly disposed of. Next page, top of the page, page three. Commercial waste is being disposed of in our collection sites, including office waste, business boxes, packaging, tires. We've talked about that before. Remodeling debris, discarded furnishings from rental properties, et cetera. It's important to emphasize that all of that waste should be hauled to the landfill and disposed of after going across the scales so those people can pay for that waste disposal. They are not doing it, and all of that commercial waste is coming into your collection sites. And the people that are paying for that is the people paying the household assessment every year. So, your homeowners are out there paying for the waste disposal of commercial businesses on a regular basis. I was on my way out of town on a Saturday, my wife and I, and I drove by one of our collection sites. And as I did, my blood pressure nearly took the top of my head off. I saw a duly pickup truck, flatbed, backed up to one of our open gates. It was early, real early in the morning. The site hadn't opened yet. So, I made a U-turn and went back and got out and spoke to the two men that were there. I actually thought that they were borrowing some scrap metal from us and loading their flatbed truck, but that isn't what they were doing. They were actually unloading commercial waste from a commercial business out of this duly truck with a flatbed on it instead of driving it to the landfill and going over the scales and paying for commercial waste disposal. So, that price was borne, the cost of that was borne by the residential customer that we have because they have to pay with their tax bill, the $130 a year. And that's happening all over the county at every site because we leave the gate open. Out of county waste. Commissioners, I want to show you some photos. Someone give me a hand with this for a minute. Dennis? Dennis, where'd your hair go?
It fell out.
My gosh, I've never seen you like that.
I had full head of hair until I started working down there.
My goodness.
Here, Patsy.
So did I.
Just, if you want to, give me some of them, like pass them down real quick. I'm going to wait till you get your photos, and then I want to make a couple of comments.
One's got a name on it.
Yeah, it's got a Sunny's.
These are all the same pictures?
Yeah, they're all the same. You've got one from Sunny's Barbecue and one with a piece of mail from another, White Springs.
No, they can't.
Now, let me just tell you. Commissioners, some of you have contacted us because you've talked to collection site attendants that have told you that they observe vehicles pulling in. They know they're not from Swann County. They're from an adjoining county. Trailer loads, pickup trucks loader down with household waste from an adjoining county. We have lots of photos of addresses from Lake City, from White Springs, from all over the place. This is garbage coming into your collection sites. But in this photo, the Sunny's Barbecue, this isn't someone who had a party, drove over to Sunny's and brought garbage back, and then dumped it in our dumpster. To the contrary, what this is, we contacted Sunny's and informed them. They said, oh, we cater. Someone must have picked this. No, that isn't what happened. These bags were filled with receipts with waitresses' names on them, where customers had actually paid for their food in the restaurant. And these bags of commercial waste from another county were dumped off in our collection sites. I have no idea. You know, there are some projections, and I talked to Dennis about this. He and the gentleman that runs our scale house have some theories on the volume of waste that may be coming in from out of county. I don't even want to try to speculate on that right now, but suffice it to say that we are taking a lot of waste in from adjoining counties. And when that occurs, our local residents, because they're the ones that we require to pick up the tab, pay for the cost of that disposal, not only to pick it up from our collection sites and haul it back to the transfer station, but then our local residents have to pay Waste Management to dispose of it in their regional landfill in Georgia. So, I believe, I'm convinced, that if we could reduce the amount that we're bringing in from out of county, it would take some of the pressure off that $130 a year household assessment. Vandalism. I had a lot of photos of the vandalism that occurs in your collection sites. We leave those gates open on a regular basis. We have air conditioners stolen. We've had the steps stolen off the run of those little dog houses. We've had the wiring stripped completely out of nearly every collection site. I mean, all of the wires, just completely torn out. We've got photos of our pump tanks been broken off and stolen, any number of things broken off, all the plumbing pipes broken off, windows busted. I mean, it's just amazing, the damage that occurs when we leave the gates open. Number five, personal injury liability. We've got, and we know, we've got dumpster divers out there. They're jumping in garbage with dumpsters, with broken glass, tops of tin cans, syringes. In fact, I want to go ahead and, I'll circulate some of these other photos. Dennis, if you can give me a hand here. I just want to pass those down. I'll take one and stick mine down. Pass those down.
Thanks, sir.
If you have enough of them at times.
There's your next one.
Good pictures. If you go to the third from the last page, you'll see a photo of a syringe with something in it. This isn't unusual. Okay? I'd like to say that this is rare, that we see syringes and needles still attached to the syringe with stuff in them. But that isn't uncommon, what you're looking at in that photo. We've got people that jump in these dumpsters, looking for yard sale stuff and looking for drugs, and they're in there with syringes and needles like this, tin cans with lids sticking up, broken glass, all kinds of things. So, they're in there bouncing around in these dumpsters, but then when they throw all this garbage out, they throw all this trash out on the ground scavenging for things, then we have to come back. Your employees have to pick all this trash up and put it back in the dumpsters, and they're subject to the same risks that these dumpster divers are subject to when they're jumping in the cans. I highlighted some spaces there where we could try to speculate, fill in some of the numbers on some of these expenses. That's an expense that we don't want to get involved in. We've got insurance, but it takes a lot of time to try to participate in these lawsuits when this kind of crazy thing happens. The people out there mouthing around in dumpsters and/or our employees having to pick this stuff up and get injured. Number six is the disruption of services. I mentioned the $12,000 to $18,000 that we estimate it costs us to pick up garbage on our sites each year, cleaning up behind adults. But I'm just going to submit to you that the cost is much greater than that because what happens is our garbage truck drivers show up at a site to pick the garbage up. They want to pick the dumpsters up, get them dumped, and get out of there and get on to the next site or get to a commercial customer, and they can't do it. You've seen them, most likely. They have to stop. They have to get out with site attendants, sometimes inmates that we have to send in. And those inmates are either out picking up litter or they're out working with one of our construction crews. So, we pull them in along with our site attendants, our garbage truck drivers. Everyone has to stop what they're doing, pick up trash, clean a site up, and that creates that domino effect. It affects our construction crews. It affects our ability to service other customers or service other sites. And that's an expense that I haven't calculated in here, but it's costing us in equipment and fuel and man-hours just trying to clean up this mess. The next section is trucks. I want you to know what probably everyone in this industry knows as far as servicing customers. We are using the most expensive trucks and the most expensive equipment that we can to provide service at these collection sites. And I think you'll realize by the time we're finished here that it just doesn't have to be that way. The front-load trucks are averaging now about $250,000 apiece. Annual maintenance cost runs between $12,000 and $15,000, and after 18 months, those trucks begin falling apart very rapidly. And one reason for that is because our trucks are under an unusual amount of stress to keep up with what we're doing and the way that we're using them. You see, we filled these sites up with these little eight-yard containers and six-yard containers. And that works fine when you're handling waste on a smaller scale, but that is not the way the industry handles large-volume waste management. And that's the business that we're in at our collection sites, is large-volume waste management. The average life of a front-load truck for us is three years. And the reason for that is after 18 months, like I mentioned, the maintenance costs begin to skyrocket. But what's worse than that is the trucks go down and they're in the shop, and now we don't have a truck to run around and pick up garbage with. And it makes it extremely difficult for us to keep up with the volumes that we're dealing in when these trucks are in the shop. So, we have to get rid of them and replace them. We bought two of those trucks over the past, was it two years, Dennis? And those are funds that actually had to come out of some of your reserves and contingency. And it's again because our expenses, our routine expenses and revenues are almost neck and neck right now without equipment replacement. Thank you. He just gave me the answers. Next page, front-load trucks by comparison. Or excuse me, I wanted to finish talking about the front-load trucks. The front-load truck is absolutely necessary when you're servicing eight- and six-yard dumpsters, but they aren't the most efficient way to service collection sites which regularly accept large volumes of waste. Roll-off trucks, and some of you have heard me discuss this before. You've seen them run up and down the roads. Roll-off trucks coupled with a 40-yard enclosed container are better suited for large-volume applications. Without converting to larger containers designed for large-volume applications, the county will need to continue adding more eight-yard containers with our population growth until the sites are no longer large enough to hold all of them. And that's a fact. As our population continues to grow, we have to add more and more eight-yard containers. We've been doing that. You know we've been purchasing them every year, the last few years. I'm going to circulate a photo. This is kind of a fuzzy photo, but it's one that I took just to show you what these for. Dennis, give me a hand here, please. Just take these down to the other end and pass them out. Y'all could just pass some of these out real quick. The photo that you're looking at is a 40-yard enclosed container. That's the brown part. The green part is the, a compactor. The compactor is bolted to the ground. It remains stationary. It has a hopper on it. In this particular photo, and in most cases, your customers drive up on both sides of the hopper, throw their garbage in, and a tenant hits a button, and it's piston-driven. It pushes that waste up into that brown container. Fully enclosed. You don't have rain coming down through the top of it. It compacts the waste, and the important thing about this is that that single brown container that you're looking at, 40-yard enclosed container, will take the waste of anywhere between 20 and 22 dumpsters, eight-yard dumpsters. That's the piece of equipment that you would, that would require you to use, a roll-off truck. The purchase price is about $176,000. We've got actual quotes. Annual maintenance cost, seven to eight thousand, or that particular truck can be leased for about $43,000 a year, which is clearly more cost-effective than paying $250,000 for the trucks that we're currently purchasing that only last us about three years.
Could I stop you for a minute?
Go ahead.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On these cans and these containers, does that mean that every container business is owned in the city? Wherever they're at, will they be removed, every one of them?
The city is separate from the county.
What I'm saying, all these.
No, that's their, they service their own cans. We don't. Their cans. I'm only talking about our collection sites right now. Yeah, don't confuse this. I'm only talking about our collection sites right now. Yeah, don't confuse this with the city's eight-yard and six-yard containers and their trucks running up and down the road servicing those. What they do is they bring their waste to us in a garbage truck and dumping off. They pay when they go across the scales, et cetera.
What about at the Coliseum, places like that, those cans?
If it's in the city limits, the city charges us for it.
Okay.
Now, in some cases, and in many cases, we actually have some of our own dumpsters out there as well. Okay, but for now, I'm only talking about collection sites.
Collection sites.
Don't confuse any of this right now. I made some comments earlier about our commercial accounts, and we need to look at that, but don't confuse this right now with those dumpsters and other commercial accounts. So then we move right on into the discussion on containers, and I've covered most of that for you. Each site today, your collection sites, has on average about 22 of these eight-yard open-top dumpsters. Some of them, if you go out there and count, you're going to find 26 and 28 of these eight-yard open-top dumpsters, spread out all over your sites. The dumpsters cost about $700 apiece, times 22, if we just use the average number, that's $15,400 worth of containers. I'm just going to jump ahead for a second, just tell you, a 40-yard enclosed container costs $5,600, and I told you that one of those will displace, take the waste from about 20 to 22 of these open-top eight-yard containers. One of the reasons is it's compressed garbage in that 40-yard container instead of all the fluff that's thrown into the eight-yard containers. Average life of a dumpster is four to five years, our conventional dumpsters. Annually, our reconstruction cost, and we've got a welder, when we get metal and he fabricates these things, cuts the bottoms off of them, we weld them back together. Each year, we spend about $55,000 welding cans back together, and then we also purchase about $25,000 worth of dumpsters each year. Open-top dumpsters also allow the rainwater to come through, creates toxic leachate that leaches out all over those sites. Currently, our dumpsters at collection sites require emptying, this is real important. We empty these sites or service them anywhere from five to seven times a week. Five to seven times a week.
Each site?
Each site. A 40-yard container would require service two to three times a week. The average life of these 40-yard containers is eight to 12 years. They don't produce the runoff because they don't allow the rainwater to come in. They're not very attractive to dumpster divers because they can't get in them. It's fully enclosed.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead.
What happens to all the liquid that is compacted out of this garbage? Where does it go?
Because the shape-o, it's going to keep a lot of it in it, and it's going to be dumped out when it's dumped at the transfer station. At the transfer station, it goes across the floor into a drain. We hose it down. It goes into a trap that we have. It's pumped over into a leachate tank, and then it's hauled to the city and treated as industrial waste in their facility.
So there's no, there's no place for this liquid to leave this container, this brown container at the site? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not going to tell you that zero liquid would come out of there, because it's apparently possible that something's going to leak out. Due to the shape, it's going to contain more of that, and it isn't picking up the additional volume with rainwater coming through and flushing.
I understand that.
And that does happen in these open tops. We try to repair those things. When they just get so bad, we can't, we can't have garbage falling out, but the little holes that occur in the bottoms of those dumpsters will leak fluids out quicker than the garbage starts falling out. If holes get large enough where we start losing waste, we go ahead and take them back to the shop, and you'll find anywhere from 15 to 20 of these containers at our shop on any given day where we're out there, they're stacked up waiting to be repaired.
Well, I'm asking a question. Go back up to the purchase price of the roll-off truck. What's the average life of those roll-off trucks? It's the one thing you didn't provide on there that you did.
I had it on another sheet. It was longer than the front-load trucks. Was it seven to eight years? Is that what he said?
Yes.
Seven, seven to eight years is what we were told, and we talked to people that actually run those trucks. If I were being asked for a recommendation, though, I'd go with the lease of the trucks, and they'll, you know, you replace them every two years. It's something $43,000 a year. It's a whole lot cheaper for us and our purposes, and avoiding the higher maintenance costs that you incur as the truck gets older.
Are the, are the front loaders leased? Can they be leased at all?
No, we purchased those. I think we tried that once before. There was a company that was going to talk to us about leasing them, but I don't know that we ever came up with a final number on it. That one company finally said that they're going to?
Yes.
All right. So it may be a possibility. We haven't done it before. We had tried a few years ago to get companies to do that. At that time, they wouldn't. Just recently, we've got one company that says they would consider doing that with us. Labor costs. I've given you a lot of averages here, and a few run numbers. I actually went to the actual, I've got a sheet that has the actual names of the employees, and even with those that have been replaced through the year because they resigned, et cetera. Your average numbers for current labor for collection sites, and this is collection sites only, this doesn't include your truck drivers and everything else that it takes to run that business. About $280,000 a year, and then you've got your alternates, and my number is probably higher than what you might figure yourself, but I've got about $52,000 in there. And again, that's, that's high. I figured some of these, a little bit high because I don't know, they come and go. And some of your tenants that have been there longer make more than some that just started more recently. Again, currently, three sites have extended hours, and 11 sites are staffed approximately 28 hours per week.
One site's not manned, or three sites are not manned?
Well, they're all manned. All of the sites are manned, but you've got some that have extended hours. You've got three that have extended hours, and you've got two that do not have walk-through gates.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. The opening thing is that you have an attendant at 11 sites, three sites have extended hours. It sounded like there's three sites.
Right. They are manned. They just, three of them have extended hours.
I don't see that.
No. Off of page five. Just pointing out that, you know, we're trying to address a long-range plan for solid waste and try to figure out how we can avoid increasing the household assessment. But if we continue doing what we've been doing, we're not going to be able to contain that assessment. We're going to have to change something that we're doing. Because as the population grows, you just have to continue adding and adding and adding, and today, in fact, let me just say this, Commissioners, and I believe this. Let me, let me use a scenario here. If I went to the school board and said, "Get rid of all your school buses. Let's just buy a bunch of Volkswagens and run around and pick up kids," they'd say, "Well, you're crazy. Why would I want to buy all those vehicles to pick up all these kids?" And probably the same would be true for Commissioner Sessions. He's picking up people, and he's got, he knows what type of equipment he needs to get the job done. If I came in here and said, "Let's get rid of all of our dump trucks and just buy pickup trucks, because we can get them cheaper," you'd have to scratch your head and think, "Well, that's crazy." You'd have to have a whole lot more of them. Today, I'm telling you, believe it or not, we're using eight-yard containers in our collection sites to handle large volumes of waste. If today you had 40-yard enclosed containers with compactors, and you had two of them in each site, and you were servicing your large volume of waste that way, and I walked in here and said, "Hey, why don't we get rid of those, and let's put 22 to 26 eight-yard open-top containers at those sites?" You'd say, "Well, why in the world would we want to do that? It just doesn't make sense." And it really doesn't. We know that we've got high volume, but we're using the wrong equipment to try to service it, and it'll only get worse as we continue, because we'll have to continue adding more and more and more eight-yard containers as our population grows. Eventually, those sites will not hold enough containers to continue that business in that fashion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
How many yards will a front-load truck hold? Like, how many eight-yard containers?
How many dumpsters will it compress? I think they probably get, do they get 20?
They're 40-yard.
They'll get about 20.
Okay.
So they can go in and clean up a site, and then when they're, they say go into a site, and then they go to landfill.
They'll get close.
Depending on what site you're dealing with.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. Purpose of the workshop was to talk about long-range planning. We listed some criteria here. There may be others. Number one, customer service and convenience. Number two, safety of the public and employees. Number three, reducing personal injury liability. Four, cost of providing service, efficient operations, which is again reducing that domino effect caused by the major cleanups. We put those dollar figures there. Increase the revenue from scrap metal, estimated about $100,000 a year. Reduce or eliminate unauthorized dumping of hazardous waste. We talked about that. That improves safety. Reduce or eliminate illegal dumping of commercial waste. That'll increase your revenues by forcing your commercial waste to go to the landfill and pay like, in fact, let me just say, this isn't a catch-all phrase. We do have a lot of commercial customers that do pay to properly dispose of their waste, but there are probably just as many more, if not more, that are not, that are taking their waste into those collection centers. Reduce or eliminate out-of-county waste. That'll save County, Swanee County residents money, because they're not then having to pay to dispose of out-of-county wastes in that regional landfill. And then reduce or eliminate vandalism. So those were the criteria that we utilized when we were evaluating options. Close modifications. First of all, secure all the collection sites by removing the walk-through gates. And we've talked about this many times. In order to do that, you have to increase your hours to make it convenient for the customers. I shared with you earlier that the hours we have today, which were in place when I got here, it makes it very apparent when you consider these hours that it was done to try to cut costs, but it certainly did not make it convenient for customers, because when you're open from 7:00 until 11:00, and then closed from 11:00 until 3:00, and then open back up until 6:00, it's just crazy. It's too confusing to the customers. They walk, I mean, they drive up in the middle of the day, and you're closed on a day that you're supposed to be open, and it's been that way for years, so there's nothing convenient about that. I would suggest that at the very least, if we were to service those sites, have an attendant at the sites four days. Let me first of all say, in fact, I think our city manager's here. Does the city offer more than one-day garbage pickup at residences? Is it one-day service? Just one day? And that's pretty typical with municipalities. You live in a city, you've got one day. You get your garbage out there, and if it isn't there, you wait until the next week. Is that correct? In most cities. In this city, you drive to a county collection site, center, and you dump it off. But that's the way it is in most municipalities, one day of garbage service. What I would submit to you is that if we change the way we do business, that we be open four days, long days, and not shut down in the middle of the day. 11-hour days. Start at 7:00 in the morning and work until 6:00 in the evening. Starting at 7:00 in the morning, you've captured most people that are dropping their garbage off on the way to work or on the way home, the vast majority. If we were open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, 11-hour days without shutting down in the middle of the day, that's a lot of opportunity for people to get their garbage into that collection site. We're talking about really the biggest impact, and I narrowed this down. You could go back and look at your budgets and try to figure out what the costs were going to be, but what I did was looked at the additional labor. If you just look at the additional labor that it would take to accomplish that, we're adding 16 hours to each of the sites that doesn't already have extended hours. I put the formula there for you. It's just under $100,000 a year. $96,645. That number represents all of the FICA, MetaFICA, everything in the world that it takes to be in business. That's your labor difference to go to the extended hours for 11-hour days. Number two, I would convert and get out of the business of eight-yard containers. Again, if you went back and looked at those annual expenses that I showed you, you had $50-something thousand to reconstruct them, and we're spending another 25 a year purchasing them. We're at $75,000, $80,000 a year, just trying to keep up with those eight-yard containers. This proposal contemplates switching everything over to a 40-yard container with the compactor. The number that you look at on this, that I've got here, though, includes the compactor, electronics, everything it takes, with the hopper and the container itself. $630,000. Site improvements, this is an estimate. I believe it's probably high. 13 sites at $50,000. And the reason I said 13, we have a total of 14, is because we're going to do improvements for that Weldon site anyway, and I showed you $200,000 on that. And again, I think that's high. We're going to build a fence, build a little road. We can do most of the work, pour some concrete, a little building, other things. We may come in at $130,000. The trucks. If we were going to get in that business, I propose leasing the trucks. We let the company own the higher maintenance costs as those trucks age. That's a good scenario. What's worked well for us with graders and dump trucks and other equipment, you know, heavy equipment that we lease. Last thing is source of funding. How do we get there from here? Mr. Ford said that if we hold off on the Douglas Center for 10 years, that we can use some of that funding to get us where we need to go. But I told him we could probably handle this without going there. Source of funding. You've got a letter in here from Mr. Powell. I had shared with some of you previously that the escrow funds, I mentioned this earlier in this meeting, the escrow funds that we have, if you go to page nine, we've identified a sufficient amount of funding to take care of all of these upfront costs, site improvements and all of the equipment. We can free up just under $1.6 million that's been escrowed for landfill maintenance, closure obligations, that we no longer have as obligations. And Mr. Powell, in this letter, also suggests that we can free up another $400,000 in cash reserves in the collection side, but I don't believe that we need to do that. We don't need to touch that. We've got a million, a little over a million dollars in there. We can leave that. Because if you look at the numbers that we've calculated here, the total site improvements and equipment comes to $1,566,000. The escrow alone is $1,598,000. That would cover the cost without touching the million dollars in cash reserves in the collection fund. Additional labor should be budgeted each year as an operational expense. I wouldn't take that out of the escrows. And then I've listed several lines there for you that I'd spoken to previously. That of, one, eliminating that $50,000 plus each year that we're spending repairing dumpsters. We could reduce our annual dumpster purchases. That was another $25,000 a year. Increase in scrap metal revenues. I could be wrong, but it could easily be $100,000 in additional Reduction in out-of-county waste. And this may be a good opportunity to just say that as well, there is, and I think it's on the next page, I want to talk just briefly about some other items, and that, one of them being the ID card, or a placard, or a card, or some mechanism for us to say, "This is a Swanee County resident, and we can take their waste."
Mr. Chairman, before, Harrison, so before you leave from Mr. Jones, based on his review, he's saying that these, he finds, he identified these funds, and they can be used for solid waste?
Yes, sir. Mr. Powell's letter? That's right. Mr. Powell says that there's $2 million... Mr. Powell says that there's $2 million here that we could use for these improvements to the sites. It won't take that much. It's a million and a half. Million 566. We can reduce out-of-county waste coming into those sites and reduce our expense. We can reduce the commercial waste that goes in and the illegal waste that's going in and curb some of our expense. So a combination of curbing expenses, raising revenues with scrap metal sales, curbing the expense on dumpster repairs, et cetera, that should most likely cover that additional expense in labor. Okay? So the escrow funds would cover the cost of the equipment. The $96,000 increase in labor, I think, could be covered with savings, reductions, and increasing revenues with scrap metal sales if we stop leaving the gates open because today it walks out as fast as it walks in.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question. Mr. Harrison, you want to go back to page, where you calculated the loss of revenue from the scrap metal? Page two. Estimated $100,000 a year.
Right.
And you had, where it was, now I'm looking for it. You had figured out the, oh, there it is, on page eight. I'm sorry.
The Pepper site.
That's just one site. That's where I was getting that $100,000 a year. I was going, wait a second. That's only $20,000.
You can see that even with the difference in the tons, now if that ton, tonnage goes back up, I mean, I mean, the price goes back up, you can see we're going to have a windfall of revenue. If you go back to the numbers that we were generating before, just in the cost per ton, but you can see we went from 72 tons, where now we're at 330 tons because we're locking the gates. Yes, sir.
Got a comment. I just looked at those numbers, too, and if you took all 14 sites and you brought it down to 200 tons per site, which is a lot less than the Pepper site got, but you know, on average, and you expand it out, you're going to basically save or retain $280,000 worth of
That's right.
scrap a year at a nickel a pound.
That's right.
Which I don't know what the price is right now, but at a nickel, it's 280,000. And that's only at 200 tons on average.
Right.
So we're probably going to do better than that.
Yeah.
My only question with that would be, is that the worst site is, and I know cutting that average down, but are there sites that we actually don't lose anything out of? And is that number going to be mitigated a lot more than, than just 200 tons, or 200, 200 tons per, per site on average rather than the 30?
I'm going to tell you right now that the sites with open gates typically have very close to zero metal left in them.
Yeah.
You know, we've got a site at landfill on the road there on the way into the landfill that we have a little bit of metal in until the attendant leaves. You would think that being that close to landfill, they'd be concerned with us coming and going, but they aren't. In fact, I'll just tell you, they're in there scoping the places out while our attendants are still there. They drive down the road and hide in the bushes until the attendant drives off for lunch, and they're right back in there in the daylight.
I can tell you, I dumped the freezer off one day, and while I'm unloading it, the guy pulled up to me and said, you want to just load that onto my trailer?
Yeah.
And that fast, he was on it.
I'm not, in any way, shape, or form, I'm not concerned. I'm not, I'm not concerned with that. I believe that that's, that's obviously a problem. My concern would be, why did we spend money on cameras to help reduce this issue if we, number one, we have, my understanding is five sites have cameras in them. Have we, have we done a study, number one, on whether or not it's reduced it? And if not, have we talked about enforcing the law and stuff like that? That, I mean, we're talking about spending a lot of money that's sitting in the bank that can be used. And obviously, I look at this as a zero-cost conversion for the most part. I mean, the capital outlay on it is going to be, is going to be, can be met completely with what's, what we have. But I'm also, I'm concerned about the inconvenience that it gives to people who every day, they have, they have gotten used to the fact that they can walk their garbage in. And those are legitimate people who have legitimate concerns. And I know that it only takes one bad apple to spoil the whole bunch, and that seems like what we've got. But I think that it's even more regionalized because we have one bad site that makes, that makes it bad for all the sites. We have some very good sites run the way they are right now. And, and part of that is the attendant, part of that is the, maybe the area, part of that may be the very, very much the location of the sites. Where we've talked about the, the location of Welburn site being around on the county line and that being moved. The northern, the site up there by Spirit of the Swanee, which is on, on the county line as well. And talking about moving that one a little bit further into the county. So I don't see this as a, as a fix, a complete fix for everything that we've got. I think that we need to make sure that we are addressing a combination of fixes to this. So that, number one, not everybody is being punished because of a few bad sites or a few bad people in the county. And that's, I think that's why we, we, the former commission looked at the, the cameras as being the best beginning to this, to try to fix those, those smaller issues, those more specific issues with, with bad people. And I don't think that we've given that enough time to, to fix it. Having talked into some of the attendants, I'm not exactly sure that, I'm not comfortable that we've done our best with the cameras itself.
We are still installing cameras. We have some cameras in. Metal is disappearing. Fires are increasing. Sites look horrible. And we'll continue to use the cameras and we'll try to improve on that. Part of this is a law enforcement issue as well. We've had some successes with law enforcement. It isn't always the case, but we've had a few successes. I will tell you this. We've been talking about garbage, but we're also actually talking about what we represent to all the corporations and families that might move to Swanee County. It is a disaster out there. It's a war zone. This, this is the worst thing in the, in the world that we put forward. People driving up and down our roads, just driving by these sites. You know, I love convenience. But we've got success stories. We're not operating in a vacuum. We have sites that work extremely well without walk-through gates. There are counties all over the country that don't have walk-through gates. And in my mind, it's no different than having a need to buy groceries. We buy groceries when the doors are open. And people have legitimate needs for buying groceries. They have legitimate needs for getting rid of waste. But we chose sometime back to just throw the gates open and anything goes. And what we've done now is we have discipled tons of people in abusing the system. Unfortunately, it isn't just one or two anymore. When you drive up to these things after a weekend, it is a disaster. Everyone has seen it. It is horrible. What we, quite frankly, we should have all of our site attendants in here, giving them all the accolades and awards in the, in the world. They tolerate some of the nastiest stuff that I've ever seen. Every single day, they put up with this stuff. It's amazing. It really is. It, it has to be stressful. You know, I talked to some of these people that come in to apply for a job, and they say, well, I'm retired, but I want something to do. And I think to myself, well, you, you really don't have any idea. And they probably work harder in some of these sites than they ever worked before in their prior occupation. But I would be thrilled if we could just put those cameras up and it cured the problems that we're dealing with. I really would. I would love that.
I've got a comment.
It just didn't happen.
Some of the sites are worse than other sites. I mean, that's no question. We've got some good sites. We've got some bad sites. Cameras have been approved, but I can tell you from just my personal experience was, I've had, I had a local guy steal my identity, go to the mall in Gainesville, and run up seven credit cards at different outlet stores in the mall. Had him on camera at every one of them, but couldn't ID him. Said the cameras don't do you any good unless you know who's doing it. Just because you've got a picture of him, it, it doesn't solve your problem. So I mean, cameras are part of it. They provide a security measure. But, I mean, he walked away with almost 10 grand worth of stuff. In my instance, I had him on camera in seven stores.
I do understand that, but having had conversations with site attendants, that said that it took five weeks for anybody to come out and then actually look again at their cameras, at their, at the information, take it from the, there's no monitors on these, on these, in these sites, in these offices for these cameras. They have to come in and have someone through, I guess through flash drive, download it and connect it to their computer so they can actually see the results of it. I've had, I've had attendants say that they were, they have been told that they need to go out and, and monitor when they know somebody who is violated. They need to confront these, these individuals. That's, that's not a wise thing, especially when you're talking about mostly retired folks.
It's not their job to confront anybody.
I, I understand. We're going to need cameras, even if we decide to go this direction. We need, we need cameras on these sites because I can promise you that we're going to have more garbage sitting in front of the gates. We're going to have more cut locks, which we've had down in, in O'Brien. People are going to break in. They're going to do it. I heard someone at our town hall meeting suggest putting a dumpster on the outside of the, of the gate to keep people from putting, you know, their, their garbage on the ground. Well, they don't put their garbage in the dumpsters when they walk in, so why would they put their garbage in the dumpsters outside? And it would, and it completely goes against everything that we're trying to do. So, I mean, all of these suggestions, though good in some instances, we've got to be wise. I mean, I, I, if we could clean up our sites and completely, and we can fix this issue completely, I'm all for it. I mean, especially if it doesn't cost the county any more money than they're spending, or even less money than they're spending right now on collection. But my concern is, and, and even those who are, even those who are out there arguing because they don't have, they don't have the Saturday nights, in the middle of the night, they can go out there and drop their garbage off because that's the only time that they're off work, is in the middle of the night because they work days. Even expanding the hours and getting them retrained, sort of, or re, I hate to say that word because we're talking about people, but in the mode of coming into a different, a different time of the day. I, I just feel like, I think about all these people who are doing their due diligence for our community, and they're the ones that've got to make the sacrifices for the people who, who, who don't want to do anything. That's just, I'm having heartburn over it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't, even with the cameras installed, as the chairman said earlier, you, sometimes you can't find the individual, get the individual, it's going to be hard to prove that they're doing it. I don't disagree that cameras should be out there, but there, there's, I don't think there's, there's not a complete fixture that will eliminate anything that's going on at these sites. Mr. Harris, this, this the site we saw yesterday?
Yes, sir.
I, I saw this site, and I think that's the safest possible, most beneficial one that, that I've, I've, I've been around. I've talked to some of those attendants also, and they've literally told me that people come out to those dump sites and, and are down there. Now, there's some type of liability that, that law enforcement may have to get involved into because some of these people, when they, customers, they take this garbage down to these sites, they threaten them. And that ain't good. And with this, the way this thing operates, when they dump their garbage in there, the attendant there, he presses it in or the customer presses it in. And I think this do eliminate a lot of it. Now, if this don't happen, if it do happen, garbage is going to be scattered down the road. I see it on the county roads all the time. Riding out on roads, you see bags of trash, garbage. They throw it out at night. So there's no fixture to, to picking up garbage. And that's why we got these inmates. Then the county wire, they go around and pick up the trash and garbage that's thrown out. Putting the cameras there, good idea, but it ain't going to eliminate it.
I would not have a problem, considering the fact that we've got a Welburn site right now that's under, that's waiting for, I guess, the design approval and, and to rebuild it as we remove it or move it to a different spot. I wouldn't have a problem seeing if this would, would eliminate in one site or in select sites. But I still have a question about the cost of, we've got the cost of these dumpsters. Is it $21,000 for the compactor itself?
No, sir. That includes the, that's a container, 40-yard enclosed container and the compactor and the hopper, and there's a list of electrical components and other things that are involved. I just combined all of that into a $21,000 number to give you the number per. And I figured two of them at each site, so you've got redundancy. One of them fills up, customers are still coming in, and they go right to the next one, and then we service it later when the customer isn't in the site. It also includes two, two extra containers, two extra compactors and hoppers.
What's the cost of the compactor itself?
It's $11,000, maybe, plus. I, I don't remember what, the, alone.
So when you look at $21,000, we're, we're, that's all throwing everything in?
Everything in.
Okay.
Everything in. I would emphasize this as well, commissioners.
Were you, did you have a meeting you were about to get to?
I just wanted, I just wanted to recognize our city administrator, Ron Williams, from being here. He had let me know that he was only going to be here for a short time. He was in attendance today to support the Douglas Center, and I didn't want to hold him up any longer than he had to be held up.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I am a student of good governance anyway, so I'm enjoying it. Thank you so much. I, I, I will leave, but I did want to just make a comment. As a proud graduate of Douglas High School, I just want to make a comment in support of Mr. Ford and all the good work that these folks are doing in terms of their presentation. I'm not a major contributor, but I certainly am a supporter.
Yes, sir. I understand. I didn't want to, I, I knew you was getting close to where you needed to go, and I didn't want to hold you up or cut you short on anything.
Yeah, I've got some things to do tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Can I make a couple comments about, back to the Welburn site? You know, I've been there countless times. It's in my district. If we put cameras there, they'd even get stolen. That's how bad that site is. The one at Hammond, where Hammond County comes down is not near as bad, but we're getting a lot of their garbage. We don't have a lot of things stolen, I don't think, there. But the Welburn site, this last year, if I'm not mistaken, it was broken into four times, and the little building totally demolished. I mean, every, they broke in the building, they broke in the gates. So we know that the location of that place is, is a bad spot. And if you look at one of those pictures passed out, you see all the used oil in the containers they just put right in the gate. So we're dealing with probably 120 gallons of used oil that they just dropped off for us to deal with. It's the one with the barrels by the concrete. So that's, that's the Welburn site. So there's a lot of things happening coming from Columbia County, and that's the main reason we wanted to move the site. reason we wanted to move the site. Also, looking at some of the numbers, roll-off versus front load, and this, that, and the other, I look at things in long term, not just what it costs immediately. And I did a little quick deal here of a nine, nine years out, looking at the cost of front load, replacing the front-load vehicle three times in nine years, just using a single vehicle, but then also using what they discussed on the 40-yard roll-off for the, for the lease. So, just projecting this out for nine years, just the numbers. Now, this isn't fuel and reduced trips from the front-load versus the roll-off and all that. This is just numbers from fixing the cans, to buying the equipment, to leasing the equipment. In nine years, the front-load is gonna cost us 1.425 million dollars. In nine years, the roll-off, just in the, the numbers that were presented here today, and I verified through NextTran, the cost of these vehicles just now while we were talking. My brother works for NextTran, they sell these vehicles. And these numbers are very accurate as far as the cost at Randy Rent. It's 795,000 dollars over nine years. So, basically, 50% of the cost for using roll-offs, just equipment-wise, and repair and all that, not counting, I'm not looking at labor costs, I'm not looking at repairing the, the, the small dumpsters, but we're saving 50% of the cost going to roll-offs just by looking at the numbers of the cost and upkeep of these vehicles. Just, just putting it out there.
Now, is that the, the total cost for all the vehicles? Or?
Yeah, that's, that's comparing the two. Let's just say we had one, one front-load, which you gotta replace three times in nine years, and the maintenance included, and the cans and their maintenance included, versus the life of a roll-off is, is about triple the, the life of a front-load, plus the roll-off container and compactor and all, it's probably about triple the container also, as far as the cans go. So, I'm not saying I'm proponent of either one, I just did numbers. And that's what I came up with, was 1.4 million to 795,000 in nine years. So, whether the labor goes up, I think the fuel saving and fuel would cut the labor costs down because you're going three times a week versus five to seven times a week. So, I just want to put the numbers out there from what I saw.
Do you have an estimation or any idea of what it would cost to repair these new dumpsters as, when you steal? So, steal, steal.
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
But you said about 75,000 dollars a year is what you're putting into repairing these?
The eight-yard.
The eight-yard ones. The new ones?
The people that are using these, that we've talked to, say that we should easily expect 10 years out of them, the large ones.
And I figured nine, so.
And that's, that's the people that are using them every day and have been for years. One thing that I, and commissioners, let me, you'll see estimates and average, that language in there quite a bit. I'm just gonna tell you, I didn't go through here and try to refine this thing down. If I had, I would've said, there's also a savings in the amount of time that it takes to service a site. When they roll in with that roll-off truck, drop a box, pick one up, take off with it, put another box back in place, they're about 10 minutes on-site. Today, it's anywhere from half an hour to 45 minutes plus trying to service all these little cans, the way they have to pull up. And that's part of the wear and tear on these front-load trucks. They're having to run the RPMs up when they're dumping all these cans in there and then take off to the next one. I mean, that's what those trucks are designed for, but we put them through a lot of extra wear and tear because we're trying to do a large-scale job with a truck that wasn't designed to use it the way that we are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know we, we in the workshop, and we full of questions this morning. Maybe Dennis, you maybe answer this question, and Mr. Harris. I see on the back, we got, on page 10, all the counties, that surrounding counties around us. Gilchrist is 80, 90 per year. Swanee County, one, that's a assessment. Have you spoken with anybody in the surrounding counties? Are they having any issues, any problems?
What are they doing? They only pick up 40 yards at a time, one truck. Picks up one room there. We listed the surrounding counties. Swanee County's annual assessment's $130. Madison County's 194. That's 193. Columbia's 140. Gilchrist is $80 and 90 cents. Probably because of the fewer sites that they have.
What I'm, the point that I'm making, are they having issues? Same issue?
Yes. Yeah, they have a opening gate policy. The dumpsters outside, like what officials had suggested.
I know, didn't suggest, I said somebody at the town hall meeting suggested.
And it was a total nightmare, and their garbage all over the place, just like the site was.
So, they having issues, counties, other counties bringing?
What I would anticipate is approaching this the way that we did at Pepper Site. We printed brochures, we circulated the brochures with everyone that came in there for at least a couple months. Talking about the change in the days that it would be open and the hours. We produced large four-by-four signs in fluorescent colors and put them on the gates. The public was well informed before we started. And then when we started, we asked the Sheriff's Department to send some law enforcement by, even have them sit out there for a couple of days, and it worked. And we don't have large piles of garbage dumped outside the fence of the gate. On a rare occasion, we're going to experience that. But when you inform the public of what you're doing and you provide adequate opportunity for them to dispose of their waste by extending those hours and staying open all day instead of a pizza day and bouncing back and forth, I think it makes a difference, and that's what occurred in those sites. So, you know, the sites that we don't have problems in are the ones that don't have open walk-through gates. The Brownwood site over here near our office, near the airport, we don't have problems at that site. The other day, for the first time in ages, someone had backed up there with a pickup truck and dumped some garbage up next to the fence, we called the Sheriff's Department. Rare, very rare that that occurs. So, we don't have piles of garbage piled outside those gates.
Mr. Harris?
That particular location has two gates.
Let's, let's break this down into different intersections. I think we got an issue of compactors being one in our long-range plan versus the gates being more of an immediate issue. So, I mean, let's, let's just focus on that, on whether or not we're gonna do business as we've been doing it, or if we're gonna go ahead and move forward with closing the gates. But, I mean, there's a lot we're discussing, and it's all interconnected, but I think, I think we're gonna, in my mind, I wanna do, if we're gonna do anything, I want it to be in phases. And the gate's gonna be the first phase, or we're not gonna do anything. And that's what we kinda need.
Yeah, you're right, we need to do it in steps, you're right.
So, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that have voiced opinions of not being for the gate closures. I'm actually, I've had a lot of the same concerns you had, Mr. Richardson, when we closed Pepper Site, but it made, it's made a world of difference there, and I've kind of changed my opinion on it after I've seen that one. I don't know that I, I like the reduced hours, though, to a four, a four-day work week on it. I understand doing it for the cost savings, but I still like five days. I'll just get y'all's opinions on that. I'm fine with closing the gates, running seven to six, but I kinda like five days a week if we can afford it.
I would have to know how much cost savings that we would have. I mean, I would love for, and I would be in favor for anything that would reduce the cost of, of, of collection, garbage collection, so much that we could consider going back to a, going back and backing off some of these assessments just a little bit, anything that would help, obviously. I, I understand, number one, we can't go forward with a, with a, this type of setup in the future of the compactors with the gates open. That's obviously, there's, there's no way, there's no reason to have the gates open if, obviously, either, because there won't be any dumpsters for people to put anything But I have a good site, I'll be honest with you, I have a really good site. We have, out of the sites that I, that I've seen, I think I've got, we got the best site out there, but I also think that we have one of the best attendants that I've ever met. And I'll tell you, the first time I ever met him, I thought he was a, that'd be nice. I thought, I thought he was a, someone who's gonna be a problem. But honestly, he's a micromanager, and he has to be a micromanager to be able to manage those sites. In fact, every one of our site attendants ought to be a micromanager. But it gets them in trouble when they are accused by the, a public of, of harassing them, or of getting in their face, or of threatening them, and then creating a problem for the worker, and then they back off the next time, and they end up allowing people to do things that they shouldn't. We've had, in our site, we've had good attendants and we've had bad attendants, and our sites, the, the look of our site reflects the attendant, period.
But that attendant ain't managed that site if that attendant ain't there and that gate's open.
You're absolutely right, but he still manages it well even with the gate open. Because when he comes in, every time we go in when it's open, it's, it's very, very clean. And we, by the way, don't have a lot of stuff left out in the, in front of the gate either. So, that reflects upon the.
Like I said before, it's not every site, but there are problem sites that.
And based on these pictures, I'm gonna say that.
I can tell you, Pepper Site is the main site that I use. It's right down the road from the house, and on any given Monday, there was every container filled to the top, piled up at the gate and piled up inside. And we try, we put, we, we, I think my first year in office, we went out there and poured asphalt just inside the walk-through gate and brought the containers right up to the gate to keep them from piling it up. It didn't matter, they weren't gonna carry it 50 feet, they weren't gonna carry it 10 feet.
Well, based on these pictures, other than the garbage being pulled out of the dumpsters, these are commercial dumpsters right here that are violating law. I mean, this, these large containers of oil, these, all of these containers of paint, and that's a law enforcement issue, purely a law enforcement issue that needs to be dealt with.
They have been instructed that they can only do so much.
I know, they can only do so much, but I, I, I'm just saying that, understand my hesitancy when we have a good site that doesn't need to be fixed. But I also understand if you fix the site that's down the road, it's gonna transfer problems to the sites that aren't not fixed. And I understand, listen, I understand that completely, but I also understand that I got a public out there that's saying, that's not fair. So, if you want to talk about expanding hours, I would, I would talk about expanding them to five days at that. If we could afford five 11-hour days, I know that's gonna cost a lot more in, in man-hours and.
If you double your hours, you double your costs, but I mean.
But if we're gonna save that much money.
I don't know that, I don't know that you save any money just on doubling your hours.
No, I'm talking about with the, with moving to a compactor.
I, I'm not at that stage yet. I'm still talking about just closing the gates. If we do nothing different, we're looking at doubling what, what is it costing us right now, around three?
Probably about $65,000 more to do it beyond what we'd already figured here, the 96.
Yeah.
Do another 11 hours. We'd figure 16 additional hours.
Right.
To get us to 44. So, it'd be, that's 96, so probably another $66,000.
150, 160,000.
Do five elevens, 150, 160,000 dollars.
And I think that's why they did it, they put that big gap in the middle so they can get the mornings and the afternoons, where people are coming before work and after work. And I can understand all of that. If we don't do something that's gonna offset the cost of the man-hours, then if we just close the gates, it's gonna cost us at least $100,000 a year more than we're paying.
But we'll probably get back scrap metal at $100,000 a year.
There you go, okay.
I mean. That is the difference, is your scrap metal and some of the other stuff that comes in at night.
And, and the stuff you have to dispose of that costs us money, like oil and things like that, it actually costs us extra money to go dispose of.
I had another photo, I wish I'd brought it, and Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna get too distracted with this, but I, I had a photo of all the liquid waste that we had taken just in two days at all of our sites, and it was in an area that would reach from here to that wall and about 12 feet wide, barrels and buckets of liquid waste that had come into our sites after hours.
That's another thing. You don't know what it is when it comes in on late.
Chemicals.
I know, I've, I've torn down greenhouses at, at the farm, and I wasn't sure what was in those containers.
And, I mean, I'm not for expanding anything, but, I mean, in a situation like this, when you have dump sites that are open, you don't know what you're getting come that morning. I mean, batteries, tires, liquid waste, it, it does put us as an exposure. And I don't think, I mean, yeah, you got some people that drop it off 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, but for the majority, that's not your vast amount of people that's dumping stuff.
Is it possible to, is it possible to consider different sites, different hours? So that.
I wouldn't recommend that, because your, your customers view this service as a county-wide service, and if we keep the hours consistent, and they haven't driven to a site that's now closed or open, back and forth, I think it creates too much confusion.
Well, the public was the one who suggested it, so that's the reason why I'm asking.
I understand it put you in a bad situation, because his constituents is concerned about the hours and keeping their site clean. But then on the other end, no one is saying anything, so, but I think if you're gonna do it, it's gotta be county-wide, to where it caused, it may create, at, at some time, it should level out, and it puts you in a bad situation.
Mr. Harris?
I was just gonna call on what Commissioner Richardson was saying, and I agree with him. I mean, we're hearing it on both sides, you know, 80% of the public do what's supposed to be done the right way, and it seems like, they feel like they're being penalized because of the wrong doors. But it's a very difficult situation we're in. I mean, it's obviously a problem that something needs to be done. And I guess you guys, some of you have locked gates in your districts. I don't think there's any in.
There's only one.
Just yours.
Pepper Site's in your district, but I mean, it's on our boundary.
It's the only one, though, right?
No, there's, there's another one.
No, you're Brown's site.
Near the office.
Oh, that one, that's.
Okay, yeah. Gold kiss Boulevard, yeah.
Gold kiss.
Gotcha.
And those are the only two that we don't have problems with.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a schedule that I've had in my kitchen for 10 years that was, that I got from the county, and that's what I look at and go by. And if we change the hours, we just post it, put it in the paper, you know, everybody will have it, and, and everybody's communicated with. I have two son-in-laws that I get onto all the time about going after hours and having to walk their stuff in. I said, "Come in my kitchen right here and look at this schedule. I know that on Saturdays between these hours, you got time to go to the dump," because they're always griping about walking in at night. I said, "Well, just look at the schedule, it'll be better for you." So, you know.
I think we should even get the little magnets with the days on it.
Yeah, you could do that.
Hours, extended hours, would that help with the thing down?
The extended hours would mitigate the, the issues with the, with closing the gates somewhat, but, I mean, unless you're open 24 hours a day.
An extra day, with an extra day?
I think the extra day would be a huge benefit, putting in Wednesday rather than, putting in Wednesday, you get, I'm sorry, putting in Tuesday or Thursday on it. But then some people are gonna be, they want it open on Sunday afternoon, too, so you're not gonna please everybody, and most people you're not gonna please at all, or some people are gonna please at all.
It's never been open on a Sunday afternoon, yeah. But it's never been open on a Sunday.
It's never been open on a Sunday, except for the open walk-through gates, again, which I know are problematic, and I, and I understand.
It's the biggest of the problem days, Sunday.
There are some, there are some sites that represent the worst of the problem. So, my, so my, my suggestion, my suggestion would be to deal with those sites individually rather than as a county on a whole. But that's, you did it with Pepper Site. I think we were on the right course to get the Welburn site fixed, and then eventually the, the site up on the northern end of the county. And if we, if we did it that way, I think it would be, I also, by the way, think that communication and, and advertising. I also, by the way, think that communication and advertising and doing what you did at the Pepper Site, to be able to get that message across was, is also mitigating some of the problems. But you get back to this, this issue that if we deal with this on a, on a site-by-site basis, until we bring all of them into compliance, then I think, to me, that's just a better solution. That's not the...
When, when we originally started this conversation, what, two years ago, Pepper Site was the guinea pig. We were gonna see if it made a difference in it or how the public dealt with it. And then as that worked, we had, we had discussed moving forward with closing the gates at all of them without the compactors, just to realize the budget impact and make sure that everything went smooth before we dumped in a million and a half dollars into compactors. That's pretty much as far as we got with it, was that little bit of discussion. So I think we need to move forward with closing the gates, securing each facility the best that it can. Pepper Site, we moved the fence all the way to 51. Sites that that can be done with, we do it. Five days a week, 11-hour days, run it, post it, and let's move forward, go on to the next issue. There's gonna be people that are holed up, but it's no matter, no matter what you do, every decision you make sitting on this board, you're gonna have people mad and people happy. It does not matter. If you close them, somebody's gonna be mad. If you leave them open, somebody's gonna say you should've closed them. So just, we've got to decide what we feel is best moving forward. And for me, from what I've seen at Pepper Site, I think that's, it works.
Can I go back to saying that I think we need to deal with this on a side-by-site basis until we get it all done, rather than trying to just do it all at one time?
We can, we can start. Our worst site.
Start, yeah, start at the worst site.
And we'll save yours for last, and by the time we get there, it'll be the worst site.
Because you'll be the worst site.
I can appreciate that.
I mean, the one on 136 is a lot better than the one in Welborn. It's in my district, too. I mean, but it's just how it's taken care of, and they still have issues there. But like, if we do it side-by-side, picking the worst ones first, eventually yours will be the worst site.
Well, I mean, you're gonna set the table for people, you know. Eventually, they'll come around to it. They may not like it, but they'll come around to it. And those take the most education, the most time for education. Hey, get ready, get ready for this, it's coming.
We got a consensus on the board to move forward with closing the gates and moving the hours to five-hour days. Give Mr. Harris some direction on that.
Well, you don't really need to be making a decision.
Not making a decision, I'm saying making a consensus to give him direction to prepare something for the board.
Yeah.
I mean, if I got three commissioners that don't wanna close the gates, I'm not gonna ask him to prepare anything. But I kinda need to know if the board wants to go that way.
I think we need to move forward with it.
Yes, sir, you can get up and speak. But right this second, I'm asking for the board's comment on it. I'm in favor of giving Mr. Harris the direction to go ahead and prepare something to make action on at, within the near future of the board meeting. If y'all are, we can move on to the next issues.
I'm in favor.
I'm only in favor of dealing with side-by-side issue, basis, based on the issues.
All right, well, we can have you prepare something for us to make a decision at a board meeting, and we can have further discussion on it. I'm gonna take a five-minute break right now, and then if anybody at the public wants to make a comment on it, we come back from the break, I'll let y'all make a comment. The break, five minutes.
Chairman?
Early this morning, I hear ya. I got one in the van that says I hit the tile ass. When I roll up tile ass, the first thing I hit is the bathroom.
All right, after our break, which is a little more than five minutes. I think our solid waste discussion's gonna continue on a little more into the day. So we got a lot of folks here that are here for the Douglas Center. So I'm gonna go ahead and, let's just kinda break out of the solid waste for a second. Let's go ahead and discuss the Douglas Center. I'm sure y'all don't wanna consume y'all's day with solid waste. All right. Forgive me, but I didn't place it on here for discussion, so whoever, Mr. Fleming, or whoever's got it on here wants to discuss it, feel free, jump right on in.
Folks, my concern on the Douglas Center was not to come up with a plan. It was a plan for what it, an idea for what we could do with the Douglas Center versus what we, what we could do without the Douglas Center. My concern, and I've voiced this to Mr. Ford and to the, the committee that oversees this piece of property, that the, I'm concerned with the condition of the buildings that are out there and the liability that the, that is, that the county could, the potential for liability, county could face, even though we have a maximum amount of money that we would be held liable for, bottom line is, if someone got hurt out in that property, that, that's a concern for the public, safety, concern for the taxpayers, concern for taxpayers and what they're telling the county that's faced lawsuit. I, I don't like the idea of leasing part of a building that's, the other part of the building has got broken glass, it's got leak and ruse, that places where people can hide and find... They can do drugs back in there, they can, they could do all kinds of interesting little things out there that I've been told have happened in the past, and could continue to happen. I don't, I just don't like the situation at all. And I've suggested the possibility of, of the classrooms, the buildings that made up the school itself, other than gymnasium, being fenced off and not being leased out and used for anything else until the county comes up with a decision, the commissioners come up with a decision as to what we're gonna do with the buildings. I've suggested the potential of go ahead and, and removing some of the buildings that are in the worst shape. I mean, I'm open to anything to, to reduce our liability out there if somebody get hurt on that piece of property. It's just a big, open piece of property that's got a lot of potential for problems, safety issues. And I'm surprised, to be honest with you, I'm surprised being in a county facility that we haven't seen OSHA involved. And I just, I don't know how they all, they all work, but it's a concern of mine. So I wanted to talk about doing something to lessen that liability issue.
Okay.
If that moves us, by the way, if that moves us to a quicker decision as to our, the future of Douglas Center, then so be it. But something needs to be done.
What's your suggestion?
My suggestion is to fence off that whole, the whole part of that facility, classrooms and all. I know it's not gonna keep people from climbing fences, but at least we've, we've, you know, we've put, and put no trespassing signs up there and not used until the county commissioner, the board of commissioners come up with a, a decision on what we wanna do with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have, from the time that I've been on this board, there were three instances that, before you all got on the board, the commission at the time wanted to push you down. And I stepped forward and said, "No, let's don't push it down." After that, that's when progress started. And just to sum it up to some individuals that don't know the history behind how things have been going. In doing so, the alumni, Douglas alumni come into play, and they asked, came to me and asked about some space at the, at the Douglas Center. When we, when we did that, I'm just gonna fast forward. Last year, we were, had two rooms available for use for the Douglas alumni. And in this doing so, we were expecting to have some work out there, which it never occurred, never happened. So when that didn't happen, we set, we set money aside, you was on the board at the time, we set some money aside to do these two classrooms. That didn't happen. So after, after the discussion and the talks, just broke. And there were, with the Douglas alumni, well, Mr. Ford and I, we had some disagreement. But the fences were mended, and when those fences were mended, we were trying to move forward. Now, in October, we had a meeting at Public Works, and I was asked to get a feasibility study done by a minority group. And then we could determine what direction we was gonna be trying to go in with the, with the Douglas Center. Now, I am for renovation, I am for improvements of the Douglas Center. I am for that. I went to school there, starting in 1963, so yes, I am in favor of making some type of improvements. But we gotta know where we're going, how we're gonna get there, and what we're gonna do when we get to this point, that, that this center gonna work. I looked at a presentation on December 14th, and I think all the commissioners followed suit with this, with this presentation. Very good presentation. And I see quite a few, I'm glad to see alumni here this, this morning. You know, I know at some point, maybe one of the members wanna come to the podium to speak or say some things. And, but the commissioners are not trying to hand anything, I can say that, especially Commissioner Fleming, not trying to hand you nothing. And I don't think this board, because I was, you know, I think, I think the commission want to do, but you gotta have the finances to do. We may say that, you know, the other buildings in the county are doing, but they're reaping like the, the state's attorney office over there, that's a requirement, that we spent quite a bit of money to put that facility over there. That's a requirement that, by state law, that you do that. I think, I don't think none of these board, any of these board members up here would object to trying to refurbish or come up with an alternative with a plan. And I saw a, a, I was out of town in St. Pete, and I got a petition, and it speaks to the point, to the, about the conceptual layout plan of 2014. Board of County Commission, I won't make that plan, the Board of County Commissioners never adopted any plan to tear any part of that building down. That was a freebie. Am I right, Mr. Harris?
That's correct, that was an engineering firm.
It was just an engineering firm that drew up something, something. The board never adopted anything to tear nothing down. Now, there were statements that were made, but I think some of those were just made. I don't... So I can ask, Mr. Ford, you wanna come to the podium and speak or have something to say?
Yeah, can, do you mind if we get to a little more board discussion? Because I got some things I wanna touch on real quick. For me, the first thing we need to do is come up with an overall use. What's our desired goal for the finished product? There's been a couple plans put forward, and just me speaking on, for myself, is there's been a lot of, a lot of give and take from the community and from plans that have been put forward. And the last plan that I have seen is, of course, the one that Mr. Ford had submitted in the presentation that we went to. And I, I think that's a good plan, that, or a similar plan. It gets us moving in a, a good direction, but we still need a use. I think there's some good things going on out there. We got Grant recently parking wreck for a playground. I'd actually met with Mr. Harris and discussed a couple of things yesterday, and I think there's potential, there's further potential out there for parks and rec. You know, we were talking about different sporting activities, and I don't think we have a football field, do we?
There is a football field.
I'm talking about that we utilize with parks and rec, other than going either to the track or the high school field. So there's, there's endless possibilities. We just have to come together and decide what we're gonna do and how we're gonna best do it.
Would the, would the board, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, would the board consider, and Mr. Ford, would your, would your group consider potential for someone coming in, doing the work of refurbishing with the, along with the demolition that we agree upon as a board of the buildings that need to be demolished? And, and the updates that need to take place? If someone came in and did all of the repairs and leased that property as a, as a charter school? I would be, I would, I would... Okay. Okay. Just, it was just a thought, because it was brought to my attention.
I understand. I really don't wanna get, I mean, I understand that the community has a desire for it to be used in a certain way. I mean, overall, the board's gonna have to decide a use for it. And to expand taxpayer dollars on it, it's gonna have to fulfill a need for the board. Now, that need may be a community center, it may be storage. We don't know yet. I mean, we, but the way I've kinda looked at it, and I've, me and Mr. Ford gone back and forth over this, is you've got two goals. You've got the preservation goal, and you have the, the, to come up with a use. And I think some of the uses might be a way to preserve. So, Mr. Fleming, have you, have you, have you seen this?
Yes, I have seen. That was, that was the packet that I passed out to each commission.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the plan, I've saw the plan, and it's a good plan, perfect plan.
Except for retention.
And, and...
No, this one doesn't have retention.
Right.
Doesn't have to.
Thought he told me that it, that we had...
If you do a paved parking lot, you do. What we have here right...
There's no parking.
Doesn't have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you have any hesitation of this coming back to the board in a future meeting? And that's adopting this as our, as our plan moving forward?
Not at all.
What I'm pointing to, Mr. Ford, is the plan that you have submitted for. I mean, I'm fine with this.
I mean, it's a perfect plan, and I looked at the presentation. It was, it, it fit what I think what the community, community could use. But, you know, when it come to, you know, it's... I guess it would be, I'd say, a long-range plan of planning.
Yes, but if, if we can adopt this as our...
Goal?
As our goal on what we're gonna preserve, or what we're gonna try to redo. The, the front wing, at the very front here, these are the oldest part of the buildings, correct? So for, for me, this gives you your most historical preservation. And then we can come up with a use for, you have your classrooms or whatever the board decides to use, the remodeling of these buildings. But we can go ahead and move forward with getting started on design, demolition. I mean, if we adopt this, some of it's going away.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, last year, I think that I gave the board some direction that when we come into discussion, we had a committee picked out. And if our committee, if the committee would agree upon what that, that presentation, now, I don't have a problem with it, but I think that it should be ran by the committee, by the committee to look over it also.
Well, that's fine. If you wanna have the committee look over it and come back with the recommendation to Mr. Harris, and then y'all can present that to the board for... the recommendation to Mr. Harris, and then y'all can present that to the board for a decision at a future meeting. I'm fine with it. I think, I think this gets us, excuse me, off on a, on the right foot, and gets us moving in a direction. I mean, you've heard that old saying, blanker, get off the pot. I mean, we need to get off the pot on this and go. And I think this will get us started in that direction. And just from my side, what I see is you got grass parking, some landscaping, redo the buildings, some pavilions, some picnic tables, some historical markers, and bathrooms on the backside of the gymnasium. The bathrooms inside the gym, I don't know if they can be redone, if not, convert them into just plain locker room. But there's some, there's some things that can be done.
It's got a lot of potential, that's for sure.
Any comment?
I was gonna say, it's got a lot of historical value, too. That's what I think we need to preserve some of that.
Any further comments, any board members? I know there may be some, Mr. Ford, or anyone wanna speak?
I think, Don Hamlet says, I'm gonna reiterate the need to secure those buildings in some way, because of liability issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Robert Ford. I know Attorney Pervett always likes to introduce ourselves and gives our address, so I'm pretty trained right there. I'm Robert Ford, 8896, 135th Loop, Live Oak, Florida. Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Harris, public, fellow alumni, just thank you for allowing me to stand here today. And I want to reiterate that I live in District Number One, so I want to acknowledge my District Commissioner, Mr. Don Hale. Thank you very much. I was writing out some remarks in case I was gonna be called up today, and my wife told me this morning, you know, be humble now, be humble now, you know, watch yourself. So, that on mine right there. But I do wanna try to say a few remarks to try to enlighten some of the people in the audience, you know, what has happened. And I think Commissioner Fleming did a great job in kinda giving an overview about some initiatives pertaining to the Douglas Center over the last couple of years. And he mentioned the 2014 conceptual plan. But I just want to kinda go back to something that, you know, the board last considered, talked about the Douglas Center in a significant way. I think Commissioner Fleming mentioned it, was the October 18th commission meeting. And for those in the audience, it happened on a additional agenda item. You know, for you who don't understand or familiar with all the, you know, formal proceedings of the Board of County Commission, Board of County Commission is when it is an additional item, that means it was not advertised on the granted agenda for the community would know that the Douglas Center would be discussed that evening. And Commissioner Fleming highlighted that the day before the commission meeting, he had a group of folks together, and he had a, and my understanding, the consensus of that meeting with him was to request for some professional services to evaluate the Douglas Center, and to ask the commission to put the Douglas Center under, have the parks and wrecks to oversee the Douglas Center. But at that meeting, I missed the point that it was gonna be added to as an additional agenda item the next day, and I accept responsibility to that, because I did not understand that. And I came to the meeting, like I do most commission meetings, just thought it was gonna be a typical commission meeting, just thought it was gonna be a benign, routine meeting, and then Commissioner Fleming introduced the Douglas Center as a additional agenda item. And he made a motion to put the Douglas Center under the parks and wreck for supervision. And when he made that motion, some additional amendments were added to the motion. And one of the amendments was to adopt that 2014 conceptual plan. It was lack, it was, someone was kinda waiting on that. So, all of a sudden, big sheets of paper was passed out to the commission with that 2014 conceptual plan. And it's, you know, pretty public known that I'm, I and most of my alumni members is opposed to that plan. But, you know, and that plan was passed out, and like the chairman says, that that plan was never approved, but it appeared as they were trying to approve that conceptual plan that night, to get it on the record. You know, that's what we're gonna go with. But, you know, I'm thankful that it did not pass. And other amendments were, or other motions were introduced to demolition all the buildings at the Douglas Center except the gymnasium. And then, but that motion did not pass. Then, words were used like, we would be further along with the process if it wasn't for special interest groups. And it seems very urgent that we need to do something, we need to assert some leadership now to get on with the Douglas Center, get the plan approved, and move forward. And, you know, we recognize when folks use terms like special interest groups, single-issue groups. You know, we know those terms are used politically, nationally, statewide, and we know what they mean when they're used in this body right here. You know, it's used for political expedience, special interest groups. You know, special interest groups are groups that expecting something that's from some special effort to get something that they don't deserve, you know, from a governmental body. So, if you take a look at the Douglas Center over here, you could see how much special interest has been paid attention to the Douglas Center. It's very dilapidated, and I do share Commissioner Richardson's view that it is a lot of liability issues out there, and it needs to be secured. And matter of fact, we've asked the commission and other folks to secure those windows and doors in no avail, and it's been allowed to deteriorate. So, we just need to be honest, you know, with ourselves. But when I stood before this podium on October 18th, I took a lot of hours. Because it was, again, because it was not a advertised meeting, I didn't get the word out to get any support from the alumni and supporters, so I stood here facing a very hostile group, you know, and...
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
I understand, it's been a rocky road to get us to the point where we're at, and boards change. October was a different board.
Yeah.
And you put a lot of work and effort into this plan, and I think now you may have a board that's looking at approving it down the road. I think, I don't wanna, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I don't wanna get too much carried up in the past. You know, we can't change the past, we can change the future.
Thank you.
Let's look forward and moving forward.
Right, and what I'm here for, yes, sir.
I wanna clarify something that you have intimated, that there was something maybe inappropriate about addressing the issue at a board member, at a board meeting when it wasn't advertised as an agenda item. I wanna clarify that just because it was not an advertised item, doesn't mean that it could not be addressed by the board, again, for the public's benefit.
And I did not mean to intimate that. That was inappropriate for that to happen. I was just saying that the situation, it did happen that way. Just wanna make that clear. And, Mr. Chairman, again, when I requested the item to come before this workshop, I requested two items that's in the inside booklet there. Item one was a historical marker for the Douglas Center, based on the fact that Douglas Center was established in the early 1950s as a new center for Douglas Elementary, Junior High, and high school, and plans were to make a junior college on that site. So, I asked the board to consider applying for a historical marker to make that site a Florida landmark, to make it a historical site. And the Douglas alumni is prepared to pay for the cost for the application for that historical marker, along with that other recommendation about the layout plan. So, those are the two items that we are recommending to the board to consider.
I appreciate it, Mr. Ford. I don't have a problem with making an application for the Douglas Center as a Florida heritage landmark, especially if you want to pay for it. And like I said, I don't have a problem with this plan. Mr. Fleming has requested it go before a committee, and I would ask that recommendation from that committee come back to Mr. Harris, and let's put it on the board next meeting, or the next meeting after y'all meet, and let's make a decision on it. Do so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, one other thing, is that when I learned last week that this was gonna be on the agenda, I wasn't sure what the format was gonna be, so I asked some of our supporters and alumni to submit some, a petition supporting our recommendations. And we did this over the weekend, and we, and we got 267 petitions. Do you want these on the record? You mean, name everyone?
Oh, no, you ain't gotta name everybody, would you take them?
We believe you.
I'll take your word for it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, appreciation. Clarification, wasn't there already an application put through for, and I know we've talked about this with your alumni group, for historical, as a historical marker?
I think it was for more of a historical preservation grant, what was applied for.
So, this is a different...
This is a marker, it's just in recognition of, yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's move back to solid waste. We left off with, I think, go ahead and...
You had, you had Mr. Hancock and this gentleman with the blue shirt.
Yeah, I'm gonna get some public comment on it, I wanted to give him a minute to clear out. Y'all got a problem breaking for lunch around 11:30?
I have a problem breaking for lunch right now.
I would, we just got...
I think Commissioner Sessions has to leave.
He gotta leave at 12.
Why don't we just go to 12, then, or 11:45?
We move the rest of this pretty quick.
Yeah. I'm hoping we can wrap it up.
We go to the other and come back.
Yeah. The, we've kinda set a direction on closing the gates.
We need to open up public comment.
We can, we can, we've opened up public comment after we've discussed all of it, because I think some of the comments are gonna merge into the same thing. I guess, what would y'all consider the next thing after that? Would it be compactors, or...
I think that we should take a really good look at compactors for the Welburn site, since we're in the middle of design, at least if nothing else, design it forward. The cost on this, on these things are a lot less than I had originally thought that they would be, based on conversations I misunderstood. I have, I have no problem setting up that site as a, sorta like the Pepper site being the site to look at for closing gates and changing hours. I think that the Welburn site would be a good opportunity to do that, but we need to do something on it quickly, without, otherwise we're just postponing it.
The price, the, when we go to buy the compactors and the units, do the conversion of the sites, are we going out for bid on that separately? Are we gonna do the sites, or would we bid the construction to upgrade those sites out?
I would envision, if we have the time to do it, I would prefer doing a lot of the work in-house. The electrical work, I would want to bid out. But a lot of the site prep work, you know, carving the roads out, boxing that, rocking it, getting it ready for asphalt, we could do that in-house and then subcontract the actual asphalt. Welburn site's gonna need some concrete work, but then you have some underground electrical that needs to go in. The other sites, just for discussion purposes, if we were to do those, I would envision us doing a lot of the work ourselves, with the exception of the electrical, because the containers, for the redundancy, you would back the hoppers and the compactors up end to end and have the boxes on either end. So, you would have some underground electrical work to do on those sites as well. And I would subcontract that work out. The actual equipment, the numbers that are represented in the book are off of NJPA government contract.
Okay, so that is off of...
Those have already been bid.
Okay. So, those are fixed numbers. That's what I was wanting to get at, because that was at an estimate, or...
Trucks and the containers, the hoppers, compactors, all of that's been competitive with bid, and, you know, we've got access to...
So, then, as far as the plan, you could say step one, close the gates, secure the gates. Step two, let's start identifying what sites want to be done, what order we want the sites to go in, as getting compactors, and start with the upgrades of the utilities, and...
I would probably tackle those, there's 14 sites, I'd do, you know, four or five at a time, so that we should get the best numbers from a subcontractor on electrical work, you wanna bid that stuff out. In fact, if we can bid the thing out, it'd probably, pretty much the same on the underground work, the distances may be a little bit different for each. So, that work would be bid out.
And then, next step would just be to purchase the equipment, install equipment.
That's right. We may have to modify some fences, some gate openings, just depends on the site, that may have to be reconfigured a little bit, figure out how to best fit those things in there.
I don't have a problem moving forward with compactors, as long as we can sit down, and I'm not 100% prepared to do it today, and that we can run the numbers and show that we can operate it where we're at now, and it not be... I'm here for at least the next three years, and I don't plan on raising the trash assessment to cover this, and I wanna make sure that we don't put ourselves in that situation where, you know, we have to down the road from doing it. That's my only, that's really the only concern I have regarding it, is overall operational cost on where we're gonna be at.
And, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. The only thing I can do is help you forecast on the difference in the revenues with scrap metal and curbing expenses that we have today. Because otherwise, and Commissioner Sessions ran the numbers, I mean, clearly, the equipment, trucks, and the containers and compactors, that's a much less expensive operation than we have today.
Yeah, but the only side that's gonna, the only budget it's really gonna affect is the collection side of it, because our disposal side's gonna remain the same.
My hope is that the disposal side comes down a little bit on our cost of disposal, because if we can eliminate out-of-county waste, we don't have to pay to get rid of that, which we're doing today.
This really won't address out-of-county waste, though.
If we do the, well, one of the other discussion items back here was the ID cards and trying to manage...
I ain't brought those up for a reason. I don't wanna go there.
I don't wanna get bogged down in that.
I don't either, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I think what we eliminate, too, is this, this Welburn site, this paint...
It's gonna eliminate that kinda stuff.
It's gonna eliminate that kinda stuff. Right now, like you said, you go out there, you don't even know what's out there, needles and everything, you stick your hand in that.
But that's a, that's, when it's on the site, is more, is less cost and more, and more trouble, that's all. When we have to transfer it to the, we're losing revenue from people. Now, first of all, does the, does the transfer site charge residents for bringing in oil, for instance? Okay, so, you know, we lose a little bit of revenue based on just where that would wind up.
But the biggest issue is once they put it there, it's just more trouble. So it's not, I think it's more revenue, probably more neutral than it is anything else. My concern would be the cost of the, of the operation versus what we're losing out of the sites in, in revenue, like for steel. The other issue that I, that I would be concerned is if it were completely revenue neutral, and I agree with your assessment that we cannot raise the cost of collection. If we can lower the cost of collection, I'd like to see a 10-year study on this thing, at least a revenue projection on it, to see what it would cost in 10 years, maybe even longer than that, versus going the way we're going. And that way, we can actually provide a republic and say, hey, we're gonna cost you less money. It's gonna cost you less problems. You just have to deal with this issue of closing gates. But if it's, if it's revenue neutral and it's safer for the public, then it's a no-brainer for me. But we want to make sure that we have all the numbers. And one of the problems is that I don't have those numbers in front of me. I have a lot of question marks on this paperwork that you provided. And I think it'd be important to have that when we come back and discuss this in a board meeting.
What I can tell you is that today we're bleeding, because our revenues and expenses are almost the same. But every time we buy another one of these front-load trucks, we're taking it out of reserves.
Sure, and I agree with that.
Because we are not generating enough revenue to cover those expenses. So that and your repairs on dumpsters alone, that's eating us alive right now.
Let's, put something together to close the gates. Let's go ahead and do us a, um?
Well, start, that'll take, I'm gonna say at least two months. Because we spend that much time educating the public. It doesn't take us long to put a lock on a gate, but we spent that much time at Pepper site and it worked. There are some locations we may have to make some modifications in gates, but, in fact, I think the board already voted to do this.
We did, I believe we did.
We did that. It's in the record. Held off because we had an election, we had a lot of conversation, a lot of questions, and then we all.
That's why I say we brought up doing it and we, and voted on it, it's just we never.
That's right. It's part of the camera thing.
Let's go ahead and move on that. Let's identify what, go ahead and, when I say us, y'all two, go ahead and identify what site order we want to progress in. And let's, let's start with our upgrades or get ready to move in that direction. And the biggest thing is let's, let's put an operational, let's put a, essentially, let's sit down and put a budget together on it, on what we think's gonna run us. That's gonna be the holdup for me. If we can make it work, and I'm moving forward with it. If we can't, then I hate to say, I won't say, do it like we've been doing it.
If you continue doing what you're doing, you're gonna go bankrupt. That's the problem. That's what I'm trying to point out.
I understand that.
It's sustainable.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to, it's not sustainable, but I don't want to jump into something that's gonna be even more. I mean, all of us pay with tax dollars, so I just don't want to, I don't want to go to, I don't want to be Madison County. I don't want to go to $194 a house. And they operate kind of, that's the, that's the mirror.
I agree with you.
I mean, that's, that's what I have to look at right now. They run 13 sites with 13 compact, well, they might not have 13 compacters. I don't know if they have one in every site. But, um, but I do realize that they run nearly the same amount of sites, but they have less population, less households to generate revenue off of.
Lot of money.
I agree, and I'm gonna tell you, if you'll take this packet and just study the equipment alone and run the numbers like Commissioner Sessions has already done, which is worth a thousand words, but, and the reality is, it is much less expensive to run this other equipment than what we do today. That is a fact. So that's the easy piece of it. The labor side of it, you know, I can run, I'll put these on a schedule for you, but I can't speculate on exactly how much revenue we're gonna take in to offset some of that.
I understand that, but I mean, is this give you enough direction on where we need to start going? I mean?
Well, I'm fine with the gate. That's the easy part.
Is there anything else that y'all feel need to be added to?
I'd bring back the. I just simply would ask, Mr. Chairman, that, that when you bring this suggestion back on the gate priority, on which gates you deal with first?
Those will all be done same time.
Same time. Well, I mean, we can.
And I would ask that a little bit more time be given for, at least I'd like to see what the education piece has on it, because, because on our town hall meetings, we have a clear, clear majority that they don't want it closed. And I think we have the least amount of problems, but I know it has to be done. But to give us a chance to talk to our communities.
Listen, it's, this is just discussion today.
Well, it's already a decision that the other.
It's already been voted on by the board, so I mean, it's nothing we have to decide on. It's, but still, I mean, I think this is the direction the board's pushing to go in.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify something. When we do the public information, is it the desire of the board that we go ahead and do, list five 11-hour days? Because that's part of locking the gates.
Yes.
That's the notice that we're gonna be putting out.
I don't want to go less than five days.
Okay. If the board's at five 11-hour days, that's fine.
Even if we had to close for lunch or something like that to offset some of the costs?
I'm gonna be part-time employee, so you'll have one work half-day, one work half-day, so they don't think they'd break for lunch.
Well, what? We'd have enough of them to where we wouldn't need to break.
Let me ask a question. The Pepper site's open what days right now? Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, right?
It's open every day except Thursday and Sunday.
So it is Thursdays and Sundays too, so Tuesdays?
Is it?
Five days.
So it's got Tuesdays also now?
I've got the hours here.
Is it? Is it, is it closed on Tuesdays?
It's open on Tuesdays.
It's open, it's open.
So is it the only one that's open on Tuesdays? So it's the only one the county opened on Tuesdays? Everything else is closed on Tuesdays and Thursdays? Well, yeah, the landfill site, but I mean, so the other 13, because everybody's, a lot of people are used to Tuesdays and Thursdays just being closed. So saying that, if we just went ahead and lengthened the hours on the days that everybody else is open and just leave Pepper site like it is, maybe we ought to roll into four longer days to start with and see how that works. And then if we need one more day, we'll go to another day, instead of just throwing that extra day in there right off the bat with the longer hours.
It's already five days, isn't it?
No, I don't have Tuesdays and.
Right now, all the sites are closed, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Sundays.
Except for one.
Except for one.
Well, in the collection.
The landfill.
Landfill. But I'm just saying, let's extend the hours first. If we close the gates, extend the hours first on the regular days. And then, if we see a need, then go, maybe use Tuesday as the next day to open it.
Question, Mr. Chairman, how many hours do the part-timers work?
28.
28.
28 hours a week. Okay, and if we're hiring, hiring two part-timers, we don't have 28 times 28, or 28, add 28.
16 additional.
Is, yeah, 16 additional. And what I'm suggesting is if we do that, to extend the hours to seven to seven, because we already have a 7 o'clock opening in the evening as it is. It goes from 3 to 7 in the evening. We have, if we just open it from 7 to 7 in the morning, we balance out the hours. That's 24 hours apiece on each, in each group. You're not extending any more hours, and we're not going to a five-day-a-week opening, but we're giving that extra hour in there, so we're having less of a hiccup.
I wasn't thinking about it. It's already being closed on Tuesday. That's, I mean, if, I don't want to.
I really believe, honestly, that four long, full days, you're gonna take care of the waste. I really believe that.
I'd rather go with four days than five.
I'm open to it. I mean, as long as if we see a problem, we're willing to extend it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open for that too. If we can't do it in four days, then we'll have to go to a fifth day. But I don't want to jump to the fifth day right off the bat.
Gotcha. All right, well, I'm fine with that then.
Still, we're suggesting seven to seven.
What happens when the time finishes at 7 o'clock? Great during summer.
Suggestion seven to seven, because we already have a seven, it's already open until 7 o'clock.
If we go 11 or four days a week, be 12-hour days with that, I mean?
I'm fine with that. It changes our numbers a little bit, but not dramatically.
Not, not, not enough to make a difference, really.
Four 12s.
Four 12s.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna open this up to public comment?
Yep, that's what I'm fixing to do now, because I think we about beat it to death. Anybody want to say anything from the public? I got one coming up.
Somebody said earlier, you can't change history. Well, if we look at the history of this.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We moved out here in 92. The collection, we had various cans anywhere from four to half a dozen or more at probably 15 different sites in the county on the side of the road. Was no attendant to start with. Cans would get full, they'd kind of come around and empty them and have to send somebody out to pick up all the trash around. They were accessible. There was no fencing initially. Except the only one I can remember having fences is the one up on 129. But it didn't work then. To address the problem, they relocated the sites. Got the cans off the side of the road, which was an eyesore, and we went to what we currently have. Then it was decided that because it was limited, they'd put gates in. Well, we now know that that didn't work out too well. And now, after saying all of that, like I say, this has been going on since 92. County commission after county commission after county commission has kicked the can down the road. They try something, it doesn't work. They complain about it. Everybody in the public complains about it. Still, you make a minor change, well, let's put the cameras up. Cameras didn't work. You have an enforcement problem. Law enforcement's got a whole lot more to deal with than this issue. We're trying to go out, assign an investigator that does nothing but look at film and try to identify these people, and then go out and arrest them. That is not going to happen. Law enforcement does not have that, that type personnel available, nor would the taxpayers want to pay for it, I don't think.
I think we're past that there.
But piecemeal changes have not worked in the past. If you're going to make a change and you don't want to continue to inconvenience the publics, Mr. Rich talked about at his town hall meetings, this constant changing of things without solving the problem creates a problem. I think if you're going to make a change, you need to go to the compactors now. Quit spending money and wasting time. Government does not do anything fast. Government is real good about wasting money with stop-gap measures. Stop. The man sitting over there that y'all hired to tell you all of this is telling you you're going broke. Stop what you're doing. The problem has been identified. What you need to do is figure out the best way, in the most economical way for the taxpayers, to address the identified problem. If the compactors are going to be the best way to address this, and I'm not an engineer or anything else, that's the way you need to go. Don't start closing the gates and wasting two months to advertise that you're gonna close all the gates. Why don't you just develop a plan? Leave the gates. Your problem is there. If you want to address the problem, start fixing all the sites, not just one. But you do have an opportunity. You have the property now for the new Welburn location. Use that as a test case. But if you decide you're gonna do this, there may be some cost savings if you start buying all your equipment and stuff at the front. You already identified the money. You know it's gonna be a wash. The money is sitting there that you would need. Start the savings now. Why spread it out? Spend more money in the meantime. That make it, you know, you can't make the decision today, but have the county administrator come up with a plan. Do, run all the numbers. And come up with the best way that will address some of these problems. Is it gonna take care of everything, every problem? No. Life's not like that. Soon as you fix one problem, you're gonna find something else. But there are economies of scale that can be applied to address the issue and save some money. And that's what I would urge you to do. I mean, I've sat here and I've listened to this now for years, almost 25 years now. And the same problems keep occurring. They're not being addressed. Address the problem. Now you're going broke. Or you're not going broke, but on this one, it's gonna start costing you.
You ain't going broke. There's some pretty hefty reserves there. Let's don't get off on a sidetrack. We going broke.
Well, on this issue, it's not, the $130 is not going to continue to pay it. You need, if you want to hold that $130, you better go to compactors now. If not, you're gonna be doing just, you know, it's gonna cost you more down the road. It's gonna probably cost more anyway, because of inflation and everything else. That's a fact of life. But stop wasting the money and kicking the can down the road. Come up with the best plan and implement that plan. But don't take 10 years to do it. Don't take five years. I don't think you should waste any more time than you have to. If you can accomplish it in a year in a phased program, start with Welburn. There's your test site. Work out your issues there, and then you move on to the other site and do the same thing. A lot of this can be done at the same time. But the scheduling, Mr. Harris would have to take care of that. But I think you need to move and quit trying to piecemeal this thing. You're not solving the problem. At least try to get a handle and solve what you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Two points. I thought that some of the sites were open on Sunday afternoon now. But sometimes my guys work and other people work six days a week, and Sunday afternoons would be helpful to have yard debris and that kind of stuff available to dump from time to time. The other point is if there are sites available somewhere, if I got jobs a little bit further on certain days, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
For the record, that was Greg Scott. How you spell that?
Landmark, 278 52 23rd place. Okay. We, we all went in circles on this thing. Trash is trash. There's, but you can't please everyone. You're not gonna please everyone. There's always gonna be people upset over trash. All during my working years, that was a big subject. Every time, trash. Who's gonna take the trash out? Who's gonna do this and do that? But we got to look to the future. When I die, I want this place, Swan County, to be a lot better for my children and grandchildren. I want to leave it a better place. But the, the site that's closest to my house is the Anderson site. That's on one, that's on 49, coming off of 27. You got S and S, and then you come up and go up there. Between there and, and the site, the road is, stays trashy all the time. You got the S and S, and then you come up, we're going up there. Between there and, and the site, the road stays trashy all the time. Randy Harris said the other night at a town hall meeting, best we can do is educate the young people about litter. Well, we've been doing that all my life. And the bottom line is, it's a good idea. You can educate people as ignorant, but you can't fix stupid. We've got a lot of stupid people out there. They're not considered other people. Okay, we talked about the Anderson site. That serves all the people basically on the river. Remember that most of these people don't have homes, a lot of these people don't have homes, they're stat, they're zipping. They pay good taxes. But, so you have to keep them in mind before getting rid of their trash. And a few years ago, CJ's or whatever it was, the bar right across the river on Santa Fe on 129, every Monday, when the attendant went to lunch or during that break, they would load up two dumpsters half-full with beer cans. It was plain C. Everybody knew where the cans were coming from, but there was no enforcement. Well, the cans got kicked down the road now. One day, that place will level open again, but people do come from Gilcrest up there. It's closest for a lot of people. I don't even know where a dumpster or whatever is in Gilcrest, and I go down there almost three times a week. Cameras, the good and the bad of cameras. You need cameras. This is the world we live in. But if you put cameras out there and a person goes up there and it's locked, they're not, they may not dump it out in front of the, at Anderson's out there. I think a fire station. They're going to take it, throw it out in the middle of the road. So it creates a problem. At the same time, it solves a problem. But with cameras, you've got to have enforcement. Earlier, a gentleman said that the county sheriff's department doesn't have the resources. All it takes is whenever they fill it out paperwork or whatever, try to make an effort to be there, just sitting on the site. Not for, not for the garbage, just sitting on the site. When they see this, it'll deter them. We talking about hours. What Mr. Harris proposed to begin with was increasing the hours, 16 hours. Increased them by 16 hours. You've probably got part-timers, I don't know how, whether they've been part-time, what kind of benefits they get or whatever. You probably want to go with two part-timers at each site. But instead of cutting it to four days, why don't we increase it? Tuesday and Thursday. If you have to, close it, lock them gates from 11 to 3. If you, a bunch of rogues, it don't matter what time, they out to steal. But definitely close them, go ahead and close them at night. They ain't got no business in there after dark. And by being open every day, in my way, it increases the hours by 14 instead of 16. Something to consider, like you take it in consideration. The, but that's the problem right now. You open one day, close another. Open one day, close another. So therefore, that's the reason why the gates can't be locked at night, because next day it's attended it and there. The, there's a whole lot of other things that come into play here. But it's, and I say, I agree with Randy. We need to go ahead with compacters, but not all at one time. He's talking about phasing them in, that's what we need to do. Phase it in. Go out here and still put all the eggs in one basket. This is a solution to me, is to increase the days. Yes, I'd like to say it's, see it stay open from 11 to 3, the gate. But if it has to, close it. I say this with regret because I know where the trash is going to wind up. A lot of people ain't going to come back. But they used 11 and 3. They are trained 11 and 3 right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the first phase of putting compacters in is closing the gates. The gates have to be closed if the compacters are there. And I know it's going to take two months, but during that two months, we're not sitting idle. That's when we're going to propose this list and move forward with things. So this is the first stage that can be done, and I, I think that's the way we need to go. We need, I'm going to go ahead and, item number six, pull it, put it on the next agenda, Pleaser. I'm going to get quick through that one. We got three more items. Mr. Richardson, I think those are your three items. Do you have any that?
No, one of them's not. One of them's yours, I believe. Number two's yours.
No, I didn't place that. Only one I placed on there was number one and six.
Well, maybe I did, maybe I did out of a.
You did.
Okay, I did. All right. So you want to deal with number two first?
Well, I said, let's go ahead and break for lunch. Me and Dr. Jackson have a group that's come in to meet with us for lunch today, and it's 15 minutes late already. We can come back to discuss these, or we can put them on the agenda and pick it up there. My main concern was getting through solid waste today.
I'd, I'd rather put it on the agenda if we could, because I can't.
He's not going to be here after lunch.
Right.
I was hoping we could squeeze it all in.
As far as, real quickly, as far as number four, the only thing that I wanted to make sure that we clarified was, was on that 176th Road, that was, I think, one of the first commission meetings of the new commission. We had a couple of people come in from 176th Road and, and make comments about it needing to be paved. I wanted to simply hit the history of it and make sure that you guys know where we're, we're at with the process, as far as I know, and make sure that the board is okay. This is my first year's wish list. This is it, 176th Road.
Gotcha.
Getting it taken care of as, as a priority item, so that's.
So, so Mr. Chairman, you're saying you want to put everything up on the agenda?
Well, he's, the only other two issues are discuss rules for public comment during commission meetings and discuss potential for requiring permits for demolition.
And there's a demolition of, of mobile homes.
Mobile homes.
Yeah.
I'd say we put them on the agenda.
We can discuss them now, or we can discuss them on the agenda. With Mr. Sessions leaving, I knew he was only going to be here till lunchtime, so I was trying to squeeze it in. It just lasted longer than I thought. If that's okay with you, we'll just do that and adjourn today's workshop.
Put them on the next agenda.
Yeah, just go ahead and take those two and add them to the agenda, just general business. All right. Anything further? If not, just motion to adjourn.
We only count me, the motion can't make one.
It's adjourned workshop.